All right, so I'm gonna call the October 17, 2017 Planning Board meeting to order. What's the agenda?
Does everyone else need one?
So, actually, there's not a lot going on tonight, except a continued discussion for zoning articles. So Kathy, there was a meeting last night of the Board of Selectmen.
Yes, there was.
Do you want to update us on that?
Yep. What you have, the, I had sent it out by email this afternoon, and I know all of you were at work, but, and I also, you have a hard copy in front of you that summarizes the meeting, but basically, the town administrator, myself, you know, did a presentation to the Board of Selectmen, two of the members which are here this evening, and the Board unanimously, the Board of Selectmen unanimously voted to go forward with a general bylaw to opt out of recreational marijuana, and also included medical marijuana and the, I'm calling it paraphernalia, I don't know if that's the right word, but the merchandise, I guess, associated with marijuana. So, we'll be getting the, you know, exact wording from Town Council on that.
I thought there was more and more medical marijuana since recreational marijuana.
There, the, the medical marijuana, and I just read an article today, the medical marijuana, we don't have a clear process on how, so, which is part of the reason why it's been, why at least the Board of Selectmen at this point are, you know, suggesting that it be incorporated into also banning medical. The, the, there, there, there's a separate statute, you know, right now for medical marijuana and a separate statute for recreational marijuana, but there's language in the recreational marijuana statute that talks about, sort of, you know, pulling in the medical marijuana. And the responsibility, right now, that's with the Department of Public Health for issuing medical marijuana licenses for dispensaries and cultivators or grow facilities, they are no longer going to have that responsibility, and it's all going to fall to the Cannabis Control Commission. So the Cannabis Control Commission, as part of their, as part of their, their mission, that they have to, you know, come up with regulations for recreational marijuana, they also have to come up with incorporating how medical marijuana is going to fit into it. So it, it becomes an unknown, again, at this point. The, just to stay on medical for a second, the, opting out on the recreational marijuana, if, if towns have a medical marijuana, either dispensary or grow facility today, you know, operating in their community, that, under the new law, the, the medical can transform or change into a retail establishment, whether the town bans recreational marijuana or not. So, in our town, we proposed a medical marijuana bylaw in 2014. I was thinking it was just a couple of years ago, but it was 2014. And, so, and that did not get approval, you know, did not get the two-thirds vote at town meeting, so we don't have a medical marijuana bylaw. And, and in the meantime, even though we were working with a grow facility, and the selectman had provided a letter of non-opposition, and we had put together a host agreement, that company, that particular company, their lease fell apart for the property that they were looking at in town, and then they never finished pursuing their licensing with the Department of Public Health. So we have no medical marijuana in, in North Bro, and there aren't any facilities that could convert to retail. So, we, as staff, we thought it was the safest and probably the most prudent. Some people may think it's a little bit of overkill, but we're looking at it, again, because we do not have regulations from the Cannabis Control Commission, and those aren't due out until March, I've already forgotten the date, March 15, 2018. Because we don't have those, we're all operating in a vacuum of not having any, any information from the state as far as how, how they're gonna treat medical, and then, you know, how they're gonna treat recreational. So, so after, you know, a lot of discussion last night, the, the selectmen, like I said, unanimously voted to propose opting out of medical, recreational, also the, like I said, any of the paraphernalia associated with marijuana. And then, also, the, we confirmed with Town Council, we, we didn't think that this was possible, but it is. You can also add, a community can also add to the bylaw that allows use variances, as our community does. You can also add language to the recreational prohibition to say that no-use variances can, can be granted for that particular use. So the selectmen also agreed with that. So what's happening now is that we've already been in, I mean, we've, you know, are sort of in a continuous conversation with Town Council about this. They're gathering information just as, you know, as much as we are, and looking for information. So they were directed last night to do a couple of things. First, to get in touch with the Attorney General's Office to get clarification about the April 1 deadline that we've talked a little bit about. The April 1 deadline is for the Cannabis Control Commission, actually, it's not a deadline, but on April 1, they may begin, if they're ready, but right now, it's, that's their date, they may begin accepting license applications for retail marijuana establishments. So there's some confusion and question out there that, even though we have a moratorium in place until June 30, some people are of the opinion that, you know, that April 1 date, you know, is a whole new game and opens, could possibly open us up for applications to be submitted for a North Bro location. However, and what's attached to the memo from the selectmen, is the letter that we received from Town Council where we specifically asked about our, you know, the strength of our moratorium, the timing of our moratorium, and how it relates to that April 1 Cannabis Control Commission date. And Town Council is, you know, very emphatic that we're protected, our moratorium is, you know, which has been approved by the Attorney General, is good until June 30, or until we adopt a bylaw, whichever comes sooner. In our case, it would be town meeting that would come sooner, at the end of April. So, the, and then also, the Board of Selectmen asked that, for the, for the Town Council, Town Council to work with us to draft bylaws. They have provided in the memo that is dated August 2017, that came from Copeland Page, they provided model language, or, you know, sample language for a town to opt out, and for, for, for a no-town, and then for a yes-town, the language to opt out for both the general bylaw and a zoning bylaw. And the reason why they're suggesting, and, and as staff, we're gonna continue to suggest that we do both a general and a zoning, is, again, it's, it's still unclear. Which is the biggest issue about this, there's just, there's a lot of ambiguity, there's a lot of questions that can't be answered. As we talked about at the last meeting, Amy and I went to a session, I went to an additional session, which was called a listening session, that the Cannabis Control Commission had set up, and they said, you know, straight out, that they were not going to be talking or providing responses to any of our questions, they were gonna listen. And so they're doing this around the state, taking in information from the public, and then, you know, using that to help them, you know, put together their regulations. So, the, the draft language, or the sample language that Copeland provided, will be expanded somewhat, at least, you know, until you take, you know, decide what you're going to do with the zoning bylaw, but at least for the general bylaw, we're going to, you know, the direction is for them to add in, you know, the other components. And then, we also need to, and I had talked about this at the last meeting, in the event that those articles, if, if the zoning bylaw is to opt out, in the event that those articles fail at a, at a town meeting, then we need to have an article on that, that regulates recreational marijuana. So, Town Council will also be working on that with us. I provided them, which I think probably originally came from them, I provided them with our medical marijuana bylaw. I think it, you know, would be very similar. We can talk, you know, whether you wanna talk about it tonight, or at a future meeting, we can talk about where to, you know, what zoning district, or plural districts to apply that to. But again, we need to have that on there, in the event, if we go with opt-outs, you know, and the opt-outs fail for some reason, you wanna have an article that then regulates it, because without it, this is, again, different than any zoning. The absence of regulating it in your bylaw usually means that it's prohibited, but the statute, the recreational marijuana statute is written that if your zoning bylaw is absent, then that means it's allowed.
That confused me, because we don't have a zoning bylaw for, for medical, and it's not, it's not prohibited.
Um, well, we, we haven't prohibited marijuana, uh, medical marijuana.
Right. You're saying the absence of a bylaw, typically, it is implicitly prohibited, but it's...
Right, but medical, medical, excuse me, medical marijuana falls under a retail definition.
Oh, it does, so it's the same exception to the rule.
Yes, yes, yep. Yep, so if we, if we had, if we, you know, with the absence of our, of medical bylaw, and if someone had come forward for either the dispensary or cultivator, they would fall under their retail definition. But again, that's the, sort of, you know, one of the oddities about this recreational marijuana bylaw is that you, this is why the opt-out language is, that's what everyone's hearing about, is opting out, because normally, if you're, if it's absent in your zoning, that means it's prohibited. But in this case, the bylaw says you have to either, you know, prohibit it, or regulate it.
Sorry to beat a dead horse, but it's the same thing with solar, isn't it, though? We don't have a solar bylaw, but it's not prohibited, because we don't have a solar bylaw, it's allowed, because we, so...
Uh, no, actually, large, if, if somebody were to come in with a large-scale solar farm, as they're typically called, they would have to get a use variance.
Okay, right.
And the, the, but if somebody wanted to do it just for their home, or their business, like today, we met with a business that wants to just, you know, take themselves off the grid and just use solar, that's allowed, you know, that's...
Large versus small scale, okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you, sorry. I'm done.
At the, the vote at the town meeting, would that be a two-thirds vote, like the zoning issue, or is it a majority vote?
For the general bylaw, it's a majority vote.
That would be the one that the selectmen would be suggesting, right?
Yes.
But for our amendment, or our, you know, whatever we, zoning bylaw, that would require two-thirds. So if we say we wanna opt out, and 64% of the people agree, that's not enough to opt out? Am I right?
Um, yeah, if I do my math correct.
Sixty-seven.
Yeah.
So the opt-out, opting out isn't a zoning decision specifically, that's still, the two-thirds still applies to that.
Yes, yes. So the, and, and again, the, the, sort of, unknown territory that we're all in, and it's not just North Bro, so I mean, we're, you know, every town is asking these questions. You know, normally with the zoning bylaw, you wouldn't have a general bylaw. You wouldn't, you wouldn't have the selectmen put a general bylaw out there. But to, to sort of, you know, you know, make sure that we have double protection, or in the event that the Cannabis Control Commission comes up with something that's very unusual, but we don't know that, that's why Town Council's saying, to be absolutely safe, you know, if you're going to opt out, do the general and the zoning. And they would go hand-in-hand on the, on the warrant.
Kathy, can you talk a little bit more about the use variances? So when we, when you emailed me back, you said that you can't specifically, on the use variances, go after one type of...
No, that, that's what we thought, so we got clarification from Town Council on that.
So in future zoning, we could do that for other items that, you know, if you don't want a gas station, or if you don't want, you could do that as well, right?
Uh, yeah, I think...
If you don't want solar panels, you could say, I don't want any large solar farms in town.
Well, you already, you already say that by not having a bylaw about it. But what you'd have to do is take an existing use, and, and then add the language to it to say, no-use variances would be allowed for this use.
So as you go through the zoning, and there's an existing use that we, we are looking at, and we feel like it should no longer be allowed, we can, we can address it in our zoning to, by saying, there are no-use variances allowed, and that would uphold, right?
I, I can only tell you what Town Council, you know, has told us, that, that we specifically asked for recreational marijuana. So that's, that's what I have the answer for, is for recreational marijuana.
Seems...
It seems logical, I'll, I'll absolutely agree with that.
Yeah.
That it seems logical that if you have another use in the zoning bylaw, that, that you want to suggest that no-use variance would be granted for it, that, again, it seems logical, since Town Council said we couldn't do this for recreational, and you perhaps could do it for another use, but...
Right, so we went to town meeting one year to remove use variances, and...
Right, and that was defeated.
I don't know, yeah, and I don't really know what the breakdown is, maybe it's like 50/50, or 70/30, but there's definitely a breakdown. Can you look into those other communities that have, you know, that are going for, like, the moratorium? Are they addressing the use variance as well? I mean, I'd just be curious.
Um, yeah.
It's just not what we've heard over the years, when we've had really lengthy, detailed discussion about use variances, so I'm just surprised.
Well, we've never asked this question, so...
But isn't it, in terms of the bylaw itself, if it turns out that one provision is somehow unconstitutional or unlawful, it doesn't...
Doesn't negate...
...oblige the entire bylaw, just that one provision?
Correct.
So, better that it gets put in, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Because we'll have a severability clause that we have, that we have in our zoning, and so if the Attorney General, just like with any other zoning bylaw that goes to them, if there's a, a section of it, or a sentence, or something that they find that's not, you know, constitutional, they'll, they'll approve it, you know, with the exception of that.
Yep, provision, okay. Amy, did you have any questions you wanted to ask?
No, I guess, I was just double-checking on the 90 days. I know we're not gonna do a special town meeting right now, because everything's gonna be looked into, but last night, there was a lot of talk about the 90-day rule, and I know at the regular town meeting, as soon as a bylaw passes, it holds. But didn't, when we went on October 3, didn't she say to do a special nine, town meeting 90 days before April 1, just to make sure?
What she, what I, how I interpreted that, and, and that's what Town Council's memo is attached to this, if you had a chance, or if you go home tonight and read it. The, no, that 90 days is the, that's, 90 days by statute that the town, excuse me, that the Attorney General's Office has to review the bylaw and get back to the community. So that whether it's a special town meeting, or a regular town meeting, it's 90 days from when we submit the information to the Attorney General's Office. And so, the, the, whether it's a special or annual, the night that the town meeting votes, that's the night that it becomes effective. So, the, what I believe she was saying was, while she was there encouraging people to do a special town meeting, I think she was saying, you know, oh, please give me some time, don't all of you schedule your town meeting at the same time, and then I have all of you to do, you know, have to review all of it within 90 days. But that's their job, I mean, they do that every spring. And, and after the 90 days, if for some reason, the, you know, whether it was this bylaw or another zoning bylaw, they found it to be, you know, invalid, or, you know, there was some, you know, egregious error that we had made, then it, you know, you immediately, upon receipt of the AG's off, AG's letter, you go back to the, the way the zoning was. And that, and the Town Council's opinion answers more, you know, goes into more detail about the April 1.
So the use variance is, are they gonna check with the Attorney General on that, too? I know KP Law said, all right, the use variance for that one item will hold up. Are we gonna ask the attorney, Assistant Attorney General, just to make sure, too? Just to get both sides, because some of them had different opinions, and I don't know which voice holds more power.
I don't know that we can go directly to the Attorney General's Office for that kind of information. We have to go to the council.
They had a list of things they were sending.
Yeah, we're, I mean...
I think if it pops up in something that gets sent out, it'll get sent to us.
Yeah, it's not, I mean, there, 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 there's really not, there's not a question about that. I mean, Town Council is, is our legal advisor, and, and we've always, you know, listened and, and have been directed by them, and I don't believe we've been, you know, steered wrong once zoning-wise, so...
Right.
You know, and again, it's not unique to recreational marijuana. They're, they're saying that, you know, as a matter of course, you know, if a town wants to, you know, prohibit a particular use from getting a use variance, you have to write that into that particular section of the bylaw.
Okay. So I want to recognize the Planning Department, as well as Town Council, for putting together a lot of information in a really short period of time for us. I really appreciate it, I'm sure the rest of the board appreciates it as well. It's comprehensive information, and it's not necessarily the easiest stuff to get through, especially when the Cannabis Control Commission is not entirely certain of what it's doing. So for you to be able to interpret all that and provide it to us in a coherent manner is really appreciated. And then to the Board of Selectmen for taking up the issue last night on such short notice, and rendering a decision for us that we can be able to work with that makes sense, I, I appreciate those efforts as well, because I know that that was done really quickly by those standards. So, you know, I don't want that to go unrecognized, so, thank you. In terms of our meeting tonight, and what we should be doing, I know that we did an informal vote last week, and I'm, I feel as though I personally am in a better position to actually take a position this time around. I know, George, you were also undecided, I don't know if you find yourself in a better position at this point as well.
I do.
But I think maybe for the sake of our citizens, as well as the Board of Selectmen who's asked us to do so, we should revisit that vote from last week. Is there, before we do that, is there anything, Leslie, you have anything you wanna add into the discussion?
No, but I wonder if we should be having a public hearing before we do that.
Before we take an informal vote on what we're gonna do.
Oh, another informal vote, you're saying?
Yeah, just an informal vote. An opting in, because we've got a, you have to give some sort of indication as to what kind of bylaws. We really want, versus, you know, we know...
Informal vote, yeah, I was just saying, I thought, right.
Yeah, not an official vote, we can't officially vote on anything, because we don't have it yet, so... We actually need the bylaws in order to vote on them. But is there anything else you wanna discuss before we do an informal, Michelle?
I do have one more question. Kathy, so this letter was sent out on the 13th. Do you anticipate when he, Legal Counsel is gonna hear back from the Attorney General? Is it a week, two weeks?
Oh, they, they were just asked today.
Today?
So I mean, official, you know, our town administrator has, again, we've been having conference calls, probably almost on a daily basis, I don't wanna see the legal bill for that, but... The, so we, we have been talking with Town Council about, you know, these are some of the outstanding questions that we have, you know, we would like you to try to communicate with the Attorney General's Office, with the Cannabis Control Commission. Cannabis Control Commission is taking, you know, input, you know, written or by verbal. And, so, but officially last night, you know, the selectmen directed the town administrator to, you know, ask these questions, so he, the town administrator sent those to Town Council today. And, and the anticipation is, or the expectation is, is that we would have at least the draft bylaws by the next Board of Selectmen's meeting, which is November 6. And, and it certainly, you know, the, the message that was relayed to Town Council is that we certainly like to, you know, get some headway on, on getting answers to, to those questions.
So you anticipate by November 6, they'll be able to say to the Board of Selectmen, you should have a special town meeting, or your moratorium holds up?
No, 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 we're not expecting that by November 6.
Do, do they know when they would?
They, whenever they can, they're gonna press for responses, I don't know when they're gonna be able to get those responses.
So that question about whether you should have a special town meeting, or the moratorium holds up, is sort of indefinite, you're not quite sure when that would be responded to.
No, Town, Town Council's very sure that our moratorium is solid, is that, that a need for a special town meeting is not necessary, that the moratorium is in place until June 30.
Right.
However, the Board of Selectmen did indicate last night, if they receive any information, you know, back from Town Council, you know, via the Cannabis Control Commission and/or the Attorney General's Office, that it's different, and that a special town meeting is, would be necessary, then the, the selectmen have agreed that they would hold a special town meeting.
So no news is good news, you're not expecting a response back, if things change, that we'll hear something?
Um, no, we, we have asked for a, a response, because it's, it's a question that's been put out there.
Right.
But again, Town Council is, is, you know, is, is very clear that, you know, our moratorium is solid, and that's what a zoning moratorium is, it's until the day that it's, you know, that you vote, that it's no longer in effect. But because of the, again, the ambiguity, and not having any regulations in place, you know, we don't know, I don't anticipate, that, I've just never seen anything like it, that the, that the Cannabis Control Commission would go against, you know, years and years and years of zoning, you know, case history in, in this state about what a moratorium is, and how long it stands for. But, but we have asked for, you know, further clarification on that. Town Council is very firm, I'm very firm, but because the question has been raised by board members and by the residents, that, you know, we're asking for, you know, can we get some clarification from the Cannabis Control Commission, where they're gonna go with this? Okay. Makes sense, no?
Well, it makes sense, it's just that the only thing you're gonna have for the first week in November is drafts, right? But then you're still not gonna have an answer about whether this needs to be completed prior to town meeting in the spring. So you're hoping eventually, they'll answer the question, saying, we feel confident that you can move forward with your moratorium, but you're not quite sure when that's gonna happen, whether that's gonna be November, December, or January.
Yep.
Right?
Yep, that's correct. Yep. And the Board of Selectmen have agreed that, you know, they will, at every one of their meetings, as I will do with you, of course, that they will provide an update to the public on, on, you know, where it stands as far as getting information, and any new additional information, you know, not just from those specific questions that we're asking, but any new information.
Right, that's just one thing that's really concerning to most residents, that's why.
Yep, but I think...
The sooner they can address that, that's better.
Yeah, I think people were very, I don't wanna speak for the residents that were there last night, but I mean, based on the questions that were asked, I think people certainly came away from the meeting with, with much more of a comfort level, given that the, you know, selectmen said, if, if we do receive information that is going to put us onto a special town meeting path, then they will call the special town meeting.
Okay. Before we take an informal poll, anything else that you wanna add, or?
No.
Okay, so is there, actually, we don't have to do it by way of a motion, because it's just an informal poll, right? All in favor of opting out? All in favor of opting in? Is that a four and one?
And you're, and I just wanna be sure that your opting out also includes the medical marijuana, the paraphernalia?
For me, it was everything. For you?
No.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I'm definitely not opposed to medical marijuana, and if in some way we can reserve that, I would definitely want to do so.
Okay.
I think that's so tightly controlled, and so highly regulated, that, but the reason I'm voting to opt out is because it seems like medical marijuana has been sucked into the new bylaw, or the new statute, and the new, nobody knows what's going on with the new statute. If medical marijuana remains as a separate entity, I am definitely in favor of medical marijuana.
Paraphernalia?
Uh, not so hot on paraphernalia.
Okay, so opt out on the recreational and paraphernalia and in on medical?
Would prefer to keep medical marijuana, if there's a way to do it.
Okay, and you're in on all three?
Yes.
Okay. Hold on.
You... Opting out on all three?
Opting out on all three?
I'm opting out of all three, too, but I just wanted to, George, any medical can sell recreational, so if you allow medical, you're allowing recreational. That's the problem.
Why I'm opting out, because that seems to be the opinion at this point in time, which is very disappointing, but so be it.
And they said most medical probably would just do recreational, because medical was so highly regulated, licenses were like $90,000. Recreational is $5,000 a license, and there's no regulation, so they were even saying at that meeting, who is gonna bother going with medical, because recreational is so much cheaper and easier? So I think it is, I can't say for sure, but I mean, I think medical would go wide. They're not even accepting applications anymore, are they?
Correct. Correct.
So I think we should opt out of all of them.
That's why I was confused by what was even asking, holding for that.
Is that intentional, or is that part of the overall scheme that was initially put into place when the medical bylaw was, the medical regulation was enacted?
Um, I, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that, but I can just tell you, as far as... as the medical marijuana, they were doing that in, I can't think of the, the right word, but I guess in cycles. So you had to apply, you know, there was dates that you had to, you know, get your letter from the selectman, you had to submit your, your information. There was an initial review by the Department of Public Health. So there was a series of, of deadlines that you had to meet. And, and so all of the licenses for that round, around, that's what I was trying, so all of the licenses for that round have been issued by the state. They have not announced a second round, but at the same time, what we do know now is that the Department of Public Health is no longer going to be doing medical marijuana. It's going over to the Cannabis Control Commission. So, so I, I do not know, and I don't think anyone has the answer yet, will the CCC be issuing a, a separate license? There's been no distinction in the literature about, so far, about what kind of licenses they're going to issue. It all talks about just recreational marijuana licenses. But we, so we don't know if there's, if there's people that are, I mean, if they're still going to have a, is there a separate track or, so again, that's why, you know, again, people may think it's a conservative approach, but that's why, you know, we've wrapped medical marijuana into it at this point.
Right.
So George, you're, you are still part of the four, the, okay.
So then, in terms of, in terms of our work on this particular bylaw, really you're just in a holding pattern until KP delivers us some drafts to start taking a look at, which I think our meeting is not until November 15th. So are we able to receive those drafts in advance in that meeting? So when we get here on the 15th, we'll be prepared to discuss?
Yes, yep. As soon, as soon as I receive anything, you know, for, again, we're anticipating that it'll be before November 6th.
Right.
You know, you'll receive that information also. And then, and we'll go from there. And in the event, you know, right now, we'll follow our normal course, but I mean, it, you know, I, I think we're ahead of ourselves in a good way as far as the timing of going to town meeting with this. And, and obviously if we have to go forward with a special town meeting, then we're certainly going to expedite the, you know, work with town council.
Yep.
And the, and the planning board of, you know, getting that bylaw together. So again, you know, if you want to wait until the 15th, when I have a little bit more information, that's when you might want to discuss, you know, with the recreational marijuana bylaw, what districts do you want to apply it to?
Well, it, it may be helpful for KP Law to know that in advance, I would think, if they're going to help draft that bylaw in advance. I mean, I'm, speaking for myself, I would put it out on that Route 9 district where.
That's how.
All the.
Yep, that's, that's the highway business.
Right.
Zone. And that primarily runs along Route 9 and a little bit, I keep thinking, I keep forgetting to bring a zoning map up here, but.
Lawrence Street.
Runs a little bit up Lawrence Street, and I don't remember if it runs a little bit up Lawrence, I mean, excuse me, Otis, but it does run a little bit up Lawrence. And that is where, when you proposed medical marijuana, that was the district that you, you know.
Yeah.
Put forth to locate it. And then we had buffers. I'm trying to think what else was in the bylaw, but.
Doesn't, I guess we'd ask the boards, would it make sense in terms of if we have to cite recreational marijuana because for some reason there's an even stronger contingent than the opt-in people on the opt-in side? Does it make sense, do you guys think it makes sense to put it under the same buffers and zone that we originally thought for medical marijuana?
Yeah, I think using that at least as a.
Probably.
Start, yeah. Want to review it again, but I think it's a great place to start.
On, on this end, do you agree with that?
I do. Oh, Michelle or myself.
Yeah.
I do. As long as it's not too restrictive, because that was one thing they warned us about. If you put it in a zone when there's nothing available, they'll come back and say, "Well, there's nothing available there, so now we want to put it here."
So there's no use variances allowed, so.
No, I think they'd be able to, wouldn't they, Kathy? Isn't that what she was saying?
We can, we can tie a no use variance to both an opt-in and an opt-out, right?
I mean, I would start there too. As long as KP Law doesn't think it's too restrictive, like.
I, I don't know, and I'll ask that question.
Okay.
Because we specifically asked about it for opting out.
Opt-out.
Right. Yeah, I think if we can, if we can put it on the opt-in one as well.
Yep.
That we tie it to that area and.
I'll ask that question. On the, the medical marijuana, only because I read it today, I would not have remembered this otherwise, but when I sent it to town council, the buffer zone that you had decided on was at 300 feet, a buffer zone of, you know, schools, daycares, churches.
Does it include recreational facilities such as the baseball fields?
Yeah, I can get you, you know, I'll, I'll send it, I'll look at it, and I'll send it. And, and I also think to what Amy said, the point that Amy made is that, you know, town council will look at it as far as what, you know, reasonable buffer is. You know, maybe our 300, you know, maybe wasn't as restrictive as you could go. I don't know.
Westboro's 500. This is Westboro's bylaw. They're 500.
For medical marijuana?
Yep.
Yeah, so we're talking recreational.
One more thing we could do too, is you can limit the amount. Like we could say, we only want one as part of the bylaw. You can pick.
It says any medical, any, any marijuana establishment.
But it, but if you go further into Westboro's bylaw, they have a specific section that prohibits recreational.
Is there any way that we can get the towns that have already voted for opting out all their marijuana bylaws? Like, get like South Burrows and West Burrows. Can we get a copy of that?
For their opting out?
Yeah, whatever they have on now.
Sure.
Just for our next meeting, just to.
I mean, I could give you that, but wouldn't you just go with what town council is going to?
With zoning, we always look at neighboring communities do.
No, but they don't have zoning because they opted out.
Yeah. So they, so you just take a vote to, to opt out and it's, then it's prohibited in your bylaw?
Yeah.
So they didn't take the same step that we're taking, which is to have a, a sort of a backup plan. So is that what you're asking for?
They, they might have, they might have.
Their backup plan was.
They, they all might have got backups.
Well, that's I'm asking.
But I mean, as far as South Row and.
They wouldn't have passed it because they opted out. So they wouldn't have passed an opt-in.
Yeah.
So there's probably nothing available.
But we couldn't limit the number too as part, if that.
Well, this is West.
Fails. Not only we can limit the zone, we can limit the amount of.
But if you look at Westboro's, Michelle, that.
Yeah.
I think what you're looking at is their medical marijuana bylaw.
Okay.
Their, their recreational marijuana bylaw, I have it downstairs. I just didn't make you all a copy of it. It's just one sentence that, you know, says that it's a prohibited use. And the same is for South Row. South Row, actually, both South Row and West Row allow medical marijuana, and both of them voted to not allow recreational marijuana. So.
Okay.
You know, in that, and in that memo, the 2017 memo from Coleman, that's where the draft language is, is coming from. You know, they've, they've started.
So if you've opted out of recreational and there's not, so the, if there's an existing medical facility, their grandfather, they'll convert over to recreational. But if there's no medical, so let's say Westboro that approved medical, now they've opted out and they don't have a medical facility, they're, they're effectively prohibiting medical as well, right? Or is there still a provision and therefore medical to come? Or if they're converting or they're.
I don't, I don't know.
Still confused about the distinction between.
I, I don't know.
Or Kathy's head's going to explode.
Exactly.
I would think so because they were the first to do it.
Just like all for the evening.
You should just invite town council to the meetings. I would think.
Good question.
I would think that Westboro covered all bases though. They were very, you know, they were very restrictive and they knew what they were doing. They were ahead of their time.
So let's start with what we've got on the medical already, what we had proposed for the medical bylaw. We'll start with that to at least give KP Law a, a starting point for what they're going to provide us. Hopefully make their job a little bit easier and we will amend it as we see fit. The one thing that I think I'm concerned about is whether that buffer zone would now, because it's up and running, if it, it would include the baseball facility that's there, would that be part, would that be something that would be.
Oh, true.
Triggering the buffer and now are we eliminating?
No location.
A lot of that.
Yeah.
That zone. So do we actually need to be looking somewhere else?
Oh, does it come over that far?
The, the, the back of that baseball facility goes really far back and, and off towards Route 9, so.
Yeah. And the, and the highway business zone, you know, the road, the state access road to the salt, you know, kind of runs parallel to the baseball field. So you've got Route 9, then you have some houses.
Right.
Then there's the act-, so that, that's highway business and then it abuts the industrial, which is where the baseball field is.
Okay, they're not designated, yeah.
Right, so we might have to, we might have to look at a different area if we, if we can't use that one, so. Okay, so.
What about limiting the number? Is anybody interested in that too, since we're going to run it by KP Law?
Well, we can certainly ask KP Law if we can limit it to one or two and, and we, as a board, we can decide once we have a draft whether that's something that we, if that's a number we're happy with. So why don't we do that? And then, is there anything else we should worry about marijuana right now on this end? Anything else on this end? No? Great, okay. So thank you again for all the hard work that your office has done and to the Board of Selectmen and all the citizens who have spoken very loudly on this issue. We appreciate the input and the insight from everybody. Certainly, all the messages have been read and Kathy gives us all the emails that get sent in and we are paying attention. So our next meeting will be on the 19th and probably at that point we'll be reviewing the bylaws.
15th, November 15th.
You're right, November 15th, we'll probably be reviewing the bylaws for the first time as a public meeting at that point. Won't be a public hearing yet.
Correct, yeah.
But we will be properly noticing the public hearing, but we would invite everyone to attend and hopefully we'll see you guys there.
One thing, actually, I do want to add one additional thing. A couple of people said to me that because there's kind of this, I shouldn't say mass hysteria, but a fervent opposition, that the people who are pro are intimidated and there's such a stigma because of the anti sentiment, the stigma, so people who are not opposed to opting out, yeah, got that negative right, double negative, are less likely to step forward. People saying, "Well, if all these people are opposed, then nobody must be in favor," but that's not necessarily the case.
Oh, I don't think that's the case at all. I do think that there's probably a very strong opt-in crowd.
But there is a stigma.
That just doesn't feel the need to be quite as loud.
Or is intimidated or less likely because they feel there's a stigma. And I've heard that from a few people, so I just.
And, and hopefully the, the process works where this all shakes out at town meeting. That's what you kind of hope for. So, now it's encouraged before town meeting and we're all good. We're all good. Any other bylaw issues we have to discuss tonight?
Uh, nope. I, no.
Okay. I know that we, you get, you sent us something on duplexes?
Yes. What I, what I had done at the last meeting, you had just asked to have it for, by this meeting. I think it was really just to give me a deadline, which I know deadlines. So, so I sent you the, all of the information that we had talked about this past year on duplexes. So there's, and I can print it all for you for, and, and mail it to you if people would prefer that. But I sent you by.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I sent you two emails, one with all of the minutes.
Mm-hmm.
That, at which the planning board had discussed duplexes. And then I sent you a, an email first with the, you know, staff memo, the, the two different charts that we had given you about how many duplexes had been granted by the ZBA as far as a special permit, and then how many variances and, I mean, excuse me, building permits had been issued as far as the size and locate, the street address and.
Thank you.
And then there was, Amy had put together her summary of comments and I think there was a couple of other things that I had in there. So that was not to, to discuss tonight because again, I still feel strongly that, you know, you should be having any of these discussions about the moratorium and duplexes with the consultant that we've hired.
Right, okay.
Who obviously will be here on the 15th.
I just want to make sure it wasn't anything we had to, there's nothing in there we have to deal with tonight. Okay, that's perfect. So we've got some minutes, minutes of the August 24 meeting, is everyone had a chance to review?
Can I just ask a quick question about the duplexes? If you want more information from other towns, we can email you so we can get, have that for us before we meet with Judy, right? So like, looking at South Burrows or West Burrows or just a certain way they do it, we can email, right, yes?
Yep.
Yeah.
I, I think Judy is going to provide you with information.
It's the first time in 15 years of being on this board that we've ever done this this way. So what I'm simply saying is that there's no format to Judy's meeting other than for us reviewing everything that we received last year. And I feel like we're up on a crunch time like we were last year, where we're not all this board agreeing on how it should be done. So I'm just trying to figure out so we can get as much data as possible to make Judy's meeting productive.
Yeah.
It's the first time we've ever done this.
I mean, that's why you've hired a consultant, is, is because you, you know, you're not able to agree.
When we hired a consultant, it was in an open meeting, discussing it all amongst us, sort of hashing it out that way. That's the way we always did before. This is like behind closed doors, one-on-one.
No.
Well, that's just the, that's just the input that she needs so that she can go off.
These, no, 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 no.
Behind closed doors.
It can't be behind closed doors.
No, I'm talking about, I know, but I'm talking about this very first meeting where she's asking input from us.
That's not behind closed doors. People can go to that. No, no, I'm only saying that because we need to make sure that people who watch this video know that we're not intentionally violating the open meeting law.
But that meeting on the 15th, she's meeting with us each separately, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Violation of open meeting law would mean the majority of us were meeting, so we can, we can meet privately without the public. Not saying, suggesting that we should, but open meeting law, we're meeting, three of us have to be there.
Right.
So at the.
Right.
Right.
I just, I would rather just keep everything so far above board.
Yeah, I think, Michelle, I think that's just her doing extra due diligence so that she can be prepared to come back at the next meeting with what you're talking about, which is the stuff that we start to hash out.
Right.
So at the.
Okay, so.
At the last meeting, you had also asked me for Shoesbury's and Westboro's.
Right.
So I do have those. I just, I got those today, but I've, I haven't been able to do anything with them because I've been working on recreational marijuana for two and a half solid weeks.
Yeah.
So I have Shoes.
I have another question, I'm just kidding.
I have Shoesbury's bylaw and, and I have a, a call in to Westboro's planner and their building inspector to get clarification on, on their bylaw. So those are the two that you had asked me for at the last meeting.
Okay.
Can we get Southboro too?
Sure.
August 24 minutes?
I was not, sorry.
Did you have changes? Amy, did you have changes to that?
Um, August 24th? No.
George?
No changes.
Michelle?
Nope.
And I had none and Leslie wasn't there. So anybody want to present a motion?
I move that we accept the planning board minutes for the meeting on August 24, 2017.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? You're right.
I, I think so. You're just reviewing them, yeah. The, I just want to point out on October 4th, the version that you have is the version that Amy had just made a couple changes to, I think, is it last page?
Last page, yeah.
Yeah. So that, I just, just wanted to point that out, that that's the version that you have.
I have no, it doesn't look right to me.
I had one question and maybe I missed it. On page four, where we took the informal poll, I didn't see Amy's vote.
It's in the paragraph above, but I was going to ask about that too, but it's stuck in the paragraph above, but we could put it down with the rest of them.
I grassed off the same thing though, went back, so I would agree if it's, if it's confusing, we should probably.
So we'll just take this sentence. And move it there.
I can do that tomorrow.
And where were your changes?
Um, you six.
Okay, so with the change regarding Amy's vote on the informal poll and then Amy's changes at the end, any other changes on this end? Any other changes on this end? No?
Nope.
Changes?
Okay.
I move that we accept the planning board minutes for the meeting of October 4, 2017.
As amended?
As amended.
Second? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, and so, in, with respect to minutes, you're gonna find out whether we have that 30 days or two meetings, whichever's longer, to turn around?
Three meetings, right?
Yeah, three meetings, yeah.
To turn around, whether that's from the date we get the draft, or from the date of the actual meeting?
Yep, I'm gonna verify that, or check on that with the town clerk's office first, who is the, the, under the new open meeting law, each town had to appoint a.
Compliance officer.
Compliance officer. So Andy Dowd, our town clerk, is, has that job?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm gonna check with him first, to see if it's, you know, already come up in, in their training.
It doesn't have to be the meeting, wouldn't it, otherwise, he could let it go on forever.
Yeah, I would think.
Say, well, the draft went out, I've got, you know, point of having a deadline if we're based on the draft.
Um, but we just wanna.
Offensealane.
We just wanna clarify, yeah.
The other thing that that reminded me was that at some point, I think, unless I'm mistaken, we're supposed to do some online training, and hand in a certification that we did it?
Yes, yep, I'll find out, Andy sends that out once a year, so I'll find out if that's, and then I just end up forwarding it to all the boards, so I can find out whether, you know, we've already done that, and he's, nobody checks, nobody like, sort of checks on your homework, it's, it's like self-reporting.
Right.
So.
And you just email it to Andy.
Right, right. So I'll check with him as to what that date, you know, was for, I don't know if it's calendar year or fiscal year, but, or if it's right after the election, I'll, I'll check with him on that.
I can't remember the last, I can't remember if we did it this year.
Yeah, I don't, I, I'll check with him on that.
I remember getting an email, but I never did it, because I just, it just kept getting further and further behind. I don't, I don't even remember getting an email, I guess that's why I'm saying it, but maybe, I don't know.
Okay, so if you wouldn't mind checking on that?
And what about the other thing about the open meeting, where if you're, for example, if you're traveling, Leslie, and you wanna participate? How does that work?
Oh, the remote, yeah, that's interesting, except for the guidelines on.
Yeah, I, I did not read that portion, to, you know, to be perfectly honest, so I don't.
It said there used to be like five conditions, and now it just says if it's unreasonably difficult or something, it sounded very subjective.
Right, I know in the past, and I don't know if this changed either, you had to adopt that at a town meeting. You had to adopt the fact that somebody could be absent from a meeting, and, and you had to, at least in the past, you had to provide some sort of recording, and so that was one of our reasons why we never went forward with that in the past, because there's only two boards that get recorded, the planning board and the, and the Board of Selectmen. So I don't know if that's changed too, but.
Okay. I also think that it, at least for this time of year, might be worthwhile to see if the Board of Selectmen can come up with some extra money to get a clone for you.
Just, I'm just saying, I just think that, you know, this seems to be the time of year where it would be a wise investment.
Kathy, what about the other thing that we're going to town meeting for, with the zoning, with regards to, you brought it up, Amy?
The special permits.
Yeah, special permits.
Yep, we're gonna talk about that at the, the ZBA meeting in two weeks, next week, two weeks? Next week, yeah. And just to get feedback from the zoning board of appeals, and then, you know, just put together that article.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, so you've had, you know, those were the, the three main subjects that you had this year, so far. The recreational marijuana, the duplex, and the special permits.
Is that special permit article going to be promoted by the ZBA? Or is that something that we're gonna take on, or something that we're?
I, I mean, it's been suggested by the planning board, so I would assume that it would be a planning board article.
Okay.
But I'm, you know, again, just thinking that since it involves the zoning board of appeals, that they should have, you know, some say, or, you know, opinion, yeah, opinion on it.
Absolutely.
And I don't, and I don't see it, like we had talked about before, I don't see this as a, it's what we always thought.
So you're just, you're just making it real.
Yeah. Yeah, and we, and on that particular one too, because it was town council that, that, you know, verified that for us, they'll, they'll draft, you know, the specific language that we need, so we wanna make sure on that one.
Excellent. All right. Anything else to come before the planning board tonight? Start, Amy?
Um, no, I'm all set.
Michelle?
Nope.
Brian? George?
All set.
Leslie? Kathy? And I have nothing, so motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Bye.
Hallelujah.
We're out.